Okay, let's call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda, could I have a motion please if there's no changes? Abe?
There we are.
No changes? Motion please.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Moved by councillor Meister that the agenda be adopted as presented.
All in favor? Minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda meeting minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
Moved by councillor Zimmer that the regular meeting minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Delegation. Abe?
Yeah, we have representatives from the Shock Trauma Air Rescue Service with us today to give council a presentation.
Yep, okay. Well, it's my pleasure, and Jackie's as well, she's new to our Stars team, and so it's my pleasure to bring you your annual update. We thank you very much for your support. I'm Glenda Farnin, I'm the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Stars. Previously, last year, I had Martin with me, and he very much missed his role in economic development, so we are very fortunate to have Jackie, so I'll have Jackie just give them a quick little bio of yourself.
All right, so I'm Jackie Seeley, and I'll be working municipal relations with Glenda for across southern Alberta. And so I was born and raised in southern Alberta, actually grew up in the small town of Passano, a little north and east of you there. So during this time, I worked in nonprofit and also was on municipal council and the mayor for, on there for about six years, so I can greatly appreciate to the work, you know, the work that you do for your community and the effort that goes into it. And now I'm just very pleased to be here to be able to support Stars in this essential service that we really rely on for our rural communities.
So we'll just get started then. So first and foremost, on the front page, you know, after, it'll be December first, that it'll be thirty-eight years that Stars has been serving Albertans. So we're very, very pleased and proud of that, and with that, now you'll notice that we have a little, we're going through some rebrands, so you'll notice a little bit different logo there as well, you know, we've always been about providing critical care and saving lives. Now with the latest in technology and later, newer and greater medical equipment and the critical care expertise that we're able to provide across the province, our new focus is critical care anywhere. So more to come about that. Next slide, please. So of course, Stars is fueled by generosity. Previously, we did have a ten-year affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services for twenty percent government funding. Last year, they made an announcement, they would look at a higher rate for, for Stars, and so I'm pleased to report to you that at the end of last year, we did receive a top-up to fifty percent government funding. Now this is fifty percent of operational costs, so roughly ten million dollars per base, three bases in Alberta, so we have received up to fifteen million dollars. This does not include the Emergency Link Centre, which is our dispatch centre, it does not include training and education, and it does not include administration costs, so strictly operationally related costs. So more to come at a future update, we're in very high-level discussions right now with them, hoping to secure another ten-year affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services at fifty percent funding. So there'll be more to come once those negotiations are finalized. Next slide, please. So this is where we're at now with our municipal support across Alberta and into northeastern B.C. So it's quite a busy map, so I'll try to explain. First and foremost, everything that you see green is a municipal supporter of Stars as far as the rural community, or rural counties and municipal districts across the province. There are nine municipal leaders now, this year we welcomed Sturgeon County, that they had reached a level that they now have their logo on the Stars helicopter as well as the rest of these nine leaders. We welcome this year five more rural municipalities, as well as six more urban municipalities like yourselves. And there are several asks still pending, so you can see now that we've surpassed over ninety percent of the entire province in support of Stars to help us to, in a united effort, to be able to ensure that we all have access to a robust health and safety network. Now the yellow boxes, those are regional partnerships that are being built, meaning that, like yourselves, again, they are at a minimum two dollar per capita, up to ninety dollars per capita, and there are regional partnerships built through the M.D. or county, as well as the towns that lie within the county's boundaries. So there is a regional partnership between the M.D. of Willow Creek, as well as Town of Clare's Home, and the Town of Staveley, so we're continuing to build on those regional partnerships as well across the province. Next slide, please. So let's have a look at a five-year overview for the Town of Clare's Home and also within the M.D. of Willow Creek. This is up to October thirty-first of this year. So now you can see that on an overall average for the M.D. of Willow Creek, they average approximately twenty-three missions per year. Now specifically talking about the Town of Clare's Home, you would average about eight missions per year, this includes your inter-facility transfers from your local hospital, as well as very direct, directly related scene calls in your area. So basically, Town of Clare's Home is about thirty-three percent of the missions flown within the M.D. of Willow Creek. Now I've included all of the different hospitals because it's been very important to understand that most of these will be generated inside or just outside the town's boundaries by a scene call, or possibly, you know, stroke or heart attack that might have happened at home. A lot of times, these patients will be delivered by your local ground ambulance to your nearest hospital, because it is of a critical nature, then that is why Stars is called to get this patient. So the critical inter-facility transfers are a really important aspect of what's actually happening within your own community. Next slide, please. Now last year, I brought you this information about the postal codes. This is an update for this year, so to date now, in two thousand twenty-three, just for this year alone, fifteen more residents have been flown by Stars within M.D. of Willow Creek boundaries. So four have Clare's Home postal codes, and then Nant and Fort McLeod and Granum, as you can see. So in total, to date, since two thousand ten, there has been one hundred Clare's Home residents that have been flown by Stars. But more interestingly enough is again on the right-hand side. Two hundred and thirty-two total residents flown from four different Stars bases across three provinces. One hundred and five of these two hundred and thirty-two patients were picked up in Clare's Home. One hundred and twenty-seven of them, which could also include your residents, were flown from twenty-three additional locations across these three provinces. This is a testament to the value of our partnership. Your residents have access to Stars all across western Canada, where we have six bases. Next slide, please.
All right, so next we'll take a look at our Emergency Link Centre, it's located at the base in Calgary. They receive over thirty-six thousand calls a year, so on average, a hundred requests per day. So they work closely with the nine-one-one dispatch and have access to every available resource across the province, and also with the Stars Vigilant Programme, they monitor over four thousand industry sites in partnership with every aspect of industry for integrated safety and emergency response plans. So then, when a call occurs, the Emergency Link Centre is able to link together all of these resources on one call, saving precious time. Next slide, please. All right, so here we have the Stars Transport Physicians in the Emergency Link Centre, and they are part of every, like, they provide medical and procedural guidance on every critical call, regardless of the mode of transport. So you may have a Stars crew member who accompanies or is with a patient by ground ambulance or on Alberta Health Services fixed wing to get that patient where they need to go. So it's the Stars Transport Physicians who make all the logistical arrangements, like scheduling a neurosurgeon or cardiac cath lab, or even a CAT scan for stroke. So they're making those logistical arrangements with the receiving doctors and hospitals while that patient is being transported to the hospital, which also saves a lot of time. Next slide, please. So the H-145, that's our new helicopter, and this fleet is generational investment. So all six bases now are fully H-145 operational, and we were able to sell off the remaining BK-117 fleet in order to complete this capital campaign. So all ten helicopters are completely paid for, which is absolutely great. And last year, Stars was also celebrating twenty years of having, having night vision capability, night vision goggle capability. So we were the first civilian organization in Canada to be able to fly at night, which is very important as fifty percent of our calls take place at night. So that is essential. Next slide, please. All right, so here is a preview of what it looks like inside the H-145, making it an airborne intensive care unit environment. First, we'll start with the iStat lab, as you can see there, it is no bigger than the size of a cellphone. So with a couple drops of blood and within less than two minutes, we can have test results for hemoglobin, blood gases, and electrolytes. And this is vital information when our crew is monitoring multiple pain management drugs in severe trauma patients. Next slide, please. All right, let's take a look at the Hamilton T-1 ventilator, this is fully featured, just like the ones you would see in the tertiary care centres. This one's made for, you know, smaller transport systems, but it does accommodate adult pediatric and neonatal patients. We also carry two units of universal blood onboard, and this is blood that can be accepted by anyone. This is, we work closely with Canadian Blood Services for supply and demand, so that we also ensure that no blood is wasted, as it does have an expiry date. Being able to do a blood transfusion while a person, you know, is critically ill or injured means that we could save minutes, could be the difference between life and death there. We were also the first civilian organization in North America to be able to carry universal blood onboard, so we're also very proud of that, of how the innovation continues to grow with Stars. We also have the video laryngoscope, and this piece of equipment allows the crew members to see the trachea on the screen. This is essential when they're navigating difficult airways in trauma patients, burn victims, or somebody who might have been crushed on impact. Next slide, please. All right, so here we have the EZIO drill, this is only used in time-sensitive, life-threatening situations where immediate IV access is needed. So the crew is able to take that drill and drill into the shoulder or thigh bone to get instantaneous IV access, so that they can begin stabilization and pain management in that trauma patient. The handheld ultrasound, I bet you're wondering by now how all of this fits in that helicopter, everything's very compact in there, but the handheld ultrasound is also able to provide us quick results in diagnosing collapsed lungs, internal bleeding, heart abnormalities, or, you know, fetal complications in ill or injured pregnant mothers. And now with the helicopter being Bluetooth, integrated Wi-Fi and satellite connected, we are able to transfer those test results in real time to the receiving doctors and hospitals, so that they can expedite treatment plans before that patient even arrives. So again, saving some extra lifesaving time. We also carry substantial pain management drugs onboard, including thrombolytics for stroke or query stroke patients. And so we have partnerships with hospitals across western Canada who are on the stroke protocol. So when we have a possible stroke patient, this, we would phone the nearest hospital and let them know that we're, yeah, the transport physician would phone the nearest hospital so that they can let them know we're on the way with a patient, because it is mandatory that any stroke patient has a CAT scan in order to determine whether the, what type of stroke it is and whether it warrants the thrombolytic drugs. Next slide, please.
So of course, when we have all the latest and greatest in technology, and we have really wonderful new, you know, highly specialized, state-of-the-art medical equipment, it's also important about the critical care expertise in our crew. And so with that, last year I had reported that, you know, there is an air medical transport conference simulation competition each year, this is worldwide. It brings together helicopter EMS programmes from around the world, and it's a very rigorous competition. What Stars has done over the years, we've participated now twenty-one years, and we always host our own internal competition to come up with the final one-team-of-two that is allowed the honour to go to this particular worldwide conference and represent Stars. So with that, last year I had reported that it was our team that actually took first place. Out of those twenty-one years, that marks the seventh time that Stars has taken first place in the world, as well as in the twenty-one years, this year we just, it finalized at the very end of October, and we ended up in second place, which we're still very proud of our crew. That particular, within the twenty-one years, Stars crews have placed top three in the world all twenty-one years. We feel very much that, you know, we are bringing the highest level of critical care to your residents. To give you kind of an idea of what kind of situations they throw together, very inconceivable, complex types of situations. So this year, it was a head-on collision where the husband was ejected from the vehicle with a massive trauma, head trauma, as well as the wife was pregnant and having in-cardiac arrest, and the child was in the backseat with a massive head injury. So you have two people managing three types of patients utilizing the high-fidelity mannequins, and then the lights in the conference centre itself went out, and they had to continue to maintain all their patients in the dark for about two hours. That's the kind of scenarios that they are, and you do, you do not know what they're going to be throwing at you at the time that you're being graded on your decision-making, you're graded on the timing, and you're graded on the outcome of your patient. So very much, you know, we, we are very proud of every one of our team members. Next slide, please. So in closing, I would just like to say thank you very much, Town of Clare's Home. We thank you so much for your leadership, we thank you for coming onboard and joining more than ninety percent of all of Alberta in a united effort that supports Stars annually and supports our services for your residents. So your current pledge of support is at two dollars per capita each year, and it's pledged through two thousand twenty-five, which is your council term, we thank you very much for that. In this united effort, we will continue saving lives. We are averaging ten missions per day, we've seen recently, in the last few months, an increase of about thirty percent in call volume on top of the daily demand, due to a lot of the unfortunate circumstances surrounding post-COVID, as well as still seeing a lot of respiratory distress from the wildfires. So with that in mind, you know, we, we've been to your hospital a lot, you have a busy hospital, we're continuing to be able to support them and support your patients in and around Clare's Home. A life is literally saved every day, but it's partnership that makes that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It's always important to know. Thank you.
Well, that's what we're here for, is to keep your council well-informed.
Perfect.
Congratulations for the twenty-one years of top three there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay.
I just have a couple of things, we brought you a calendar for your, the new calendars are available online, as well as a couple of the newsletters, I'd just like to point out, this is an older newsletter, but still really important, in the almost thirty-eight years, Stars flew its record mission in thirty-eight years. It's quite an interesting story and a news, good news story too, it was from our northern base in Grand Prairie, and the patient was reunited with his crew as well, so really good, great story, and then this is the latest. And I also brought a set that if, we would really appreciate if you wouldn't mind to pass on to your fire department, because we very much appreciate their partnership in the chain of survival.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't look forward to seeing me next year?
Bylaw seventeen sixty-five, Abe?
So this is bylaw seventeen sixty-five, which is an operational borrowing bylaw. This is a yearly renewal of this bylaw that we have, we're required to have a bylaw for operational purposes when we're borrowing any kind of money. This one is, again, operational purposes, and had first reading at the last council meeting. It is, the principal sum is not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand, and at an interest rate that is not to exceed nine percent. We haven't used this credit, line of credit in a number of years, but very common for municipalities to have operational lines of credit, perhaps in times of emergency, or if unforeseen circumstances come up and expenses, expenses need to be made to facilitate operations. So this is on the agenda for second and third readings.
Could I have a motion for second reading, please? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to give bylaw number one seven six five, the BMO Operational Borrowing Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion for the third reading? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to give bylaw number one seven six five, the BMO Operational Borrowing Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Number two, bylaw seventeen sixty-six, Abe?
This is another borrowing bylaw, operational borrowing bylaw, this is for the town's credit card, which is set at a level through the bylaw at fifty thousand dollars. Town administration does regularly use this, and sometimes on council, regularly uses this to assist with operational matters. And again, we're required, the town is required to have a bylaw in place, essentially approving the borrowing of that, or the holding of that credit.
Could I have a motion for a question?
No.
Councillor Kettles made a motion? Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to give bylaw number one seven six six, the AMSC Operational Borrowing Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Bylaw seventeen seventy-four. Oh, third reading, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Meister? Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to give bylaw number one seven six six, the AMSC Operational Borrowing Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Bylaw seventeen seventy-four, land use bylaw amendment, Abe?
So this looks a little bit like a bylaw that we had last meeting council, which was a land use bylaw amendment. If you recall, the town is currently transferring its, some of its property on the old railway lines, two adjacent landowners off on a highway two there. And so last council meeting, we had one of the land use bylaw amendments to rezone the lands from direct control to highway commercial, and so we have, in this bylaw, very similar rezoning several lots. Some of them are to retail commercial, those would be the ones farther north, because they're more in line with the retail commercial district, the ones to the south, two to the south, lots ten and eleven, are highway commercial, as they are more, that's where the cutoff is for the highway commercial in town, so they fall under that zoning.
First reading, any questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll give motion to bylaw seventeen seventy-four, it's first reading.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to give bylaw number one seven seven four, a land use bylaw amendment, first reading.
All in favor? Delegation response, Clarestomet District Museum Board, Abe?
The museum board came as a delegation on November fourteenth and discussed the museum's highlights of an annual report and some strategic plan session that they had previously been in. Some of the requests and conversation items are going to be forwarded to Audit and Finance Committee of Council to discuss, because there were some monetary requests in that presentation, but we're just bringing this back as a follow-up to council to see if there was any further information they wanted to see, or any items that you had questions about from that report.
I'll make the motion to accept the information, and I'd also like to say it's quite the honour to work with that dedicated group of people, they're definitely a value to the Clarestomet Museum.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to accept as information the Clarestomet Museum Board's annual report and strategic planning notes as presented at the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting.
All in favor? Approved. Delegation response, Sustainable Housing Initiative, Abe?
So council also had a delegation from the Sustainable Housing Initiative, if you recall, they are a branch of the Rural Development Network, they have completed previously for the town some studies, specifically the social needs assessment, the housing needs assessment, and the affordable housing strategy. And so- And so, Social Housing -- Sustainable Housing Initiative, rather, completed a report for the town called Enabling Housing Choice with the ideas to find different -- review policies, talk to different stakeholders, and landowners, for example, town committees, town staff, developers, and to just to talk about ways to facilitate housing diversity, housing choice amongst those are would be affordable housing. And so they presented their findings, which was a pretty extensive list of findings. You have a summary of those findings in the agenda package. You also have the full report in the agenda package. I wanted to give council time to think about it and to ask questions if there are any. The Community Development Committee has begun working through this already and preliminarily, and we'll be looking into a couple of the recommendations. But otherwise, if there's no comments or questions, at the very least, we'd like a motion just for council to approve the report.
Just one quick question on that is to ensure that our public members have access to all of those studies and where they can find them. So we've got that on record, so no one has any questions about transparency.
We can put that on the website for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Could I have a motion to approve the report, please? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the Enabling Housing Choice Report provided by the Rural Development Network's Sustainable Housing Initiative.
In favor -- all in favor? Approved. Correspondence, Alberta Municipalities. Abe?
So we have received some correspondence from Alberta Municipalities with an invitation to complete the surveys. The provincial government is currently having a series of surveys, and Alberta Municipalities is having some information sessions on those surveys, encouraging municipalities, municipal officials to participate. And I'm just pulling it up here. So this is a bit of a lengthy one. I'm going to read a little bit from the document, council. But so the public surveys that the provincial government launched a deal with potential changes to Local Authorities' Election Act on topics of supporting the use of political parties in municipal governments, advance voting, making voter lists available to candidates, rules for a postponement of local elections, ability to vouch for electors without ID, use of special ballots, and using runoff elections for the position of Mayor Reeve. Other potential changes to the MGA, mandating orientation training for counselors, expanding the ability for councils to meet in private, authority for the minister to remove a counselor, rather, changes to recall legislation, that's elected official recall legislation, rules for counselors to disclose business interests other than personal history or -- sorry, or other personal history, rules for counselor disqualification, and clarify counselor conflicts of interest. So they've -- Alberta Municipalities has requested that each municipality and council have this as a conversation item on their agenda and that the counselors fill out the surveys. Surveys need to be completed by December 6th. There are links in your agenda. And also encourage your residents to complete the surveys as well. So there is a series of -- they have provided some background information on the questions and on the perhaps some of the rationale for the questions, although there's not a lot of rationale in there, and as well as what the questions are. So if there's any that council would like to talk about, we can scroll through there and -- or any questions on any of the issues, we can scroll through there. And if we don't have answers, we can definitely try to find you some.
Questions? Concerns?
What are -- what are special ballots?
So a special ballot is what people fill out if they are out of the jurisdiction during the -- during the voting period. Let's say you're traveling, or if you are disabled and can't make it to a polling station. And I think there's one other qualification, but basically it's a mail-in ballot. Yeah. We have not done special ballots here in the past. What's that?
I think the election we should talk about.
Yeah. I did it at a previous municipality. It was great. We -- municipality about the same size as Claris Home, and I think we did 25 the first year we tried it. And the people -- the people that used it appreciated it. And there are some strict protocols to make sure -- still got to do all the verification that they're eligible and all that, right? So but I know the people who were able to use it, who needed it, appreciated it. Anytime you can facilitate the vote for people, we also do institutional votes. Those are most people, when you bring the vote to them, seem to appreciate it perhaps a little more, I guess, than just walking down to the polling station. So it's a good service.
I know we were asked if we would do that, and that's something that we need to talk about next couple of years to see if we should offer that for residents. There's quite a few people that work out of town that aren't here for the election or here for the advanced vote, so.
Are you talking special?
Yeah. Administratively, it is a lot of work, but still worth it, in my opinion.
Both surveys are pretty quick to take, so I'd say just fill them out. Don't got opinions on things. Get your voice out there.
And if I could just say one more thing, I think one thing that really struck me, and I keep any opportunity I have, this whole natural disaster thing. I mean, when we had the by-election in 2018, and then we had that huge snowstorm that day, and I called municipal affairs and they said there's nothing they can do about postponing it because of the weather, I think it's really important. I mean, we'd never know when we're going to have an election. And October is oftentimes a terrible month for weather, so that's something I really hope that other municipalities are pushing for.
Questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Correspondence, President Tyler Gandom, Alberta Municipalities. Abe?
So I believe this is more of the same. I just pulled it up here. Now, it's an invitation from Alberta Municipalities who are holding a town hall on this very topic, amongst other things, I believe, as well. So yeah, so in addition to the surveys, they will -- Alberta Municipalities will also be discussing member involvement in advocating for an increase in the local government fiscal framework. And that was one of the motions from Alberta Municipalities Convention was to -- that the provincial government increase that funding pool. And Alberta Municipalities submission to the Alberta Utilities Commission on Renewable Energy Developments. So there's a registering link there that you can participate in that, and that is on Thursday, November 30th, from 3:30 to 4:30 p.m.
Okay, moving on. Correspondence, Porcupine Hills Classic Cruisers. Abe?
So Classic Cruisers is looking ahead to 2024, which is their -- which will be their 32nd Annual Car Show and Shine. They're looking to host that Sunday, August the 11th, and they would like to host the event during Fair Days at Centennial Park Ball Diamonds. This is the usual location, since I've been here anyways, of this event.
Questions?
Just get a motion from council. Get a motion to approve that?
Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the Porcupine Hills Classic Cruiser Clubs to utilize the Centennial Park Ball Diamonds for their show and shine for August 11th of 2024.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to allow the Porcupine Hills Classic Cruisers to utilize Centennial Park Ball Diamonds on Sunday, August 11th, 2024, for the purpose of their 32nd Annual Show and Shine.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, library donation. Abe?
So the town has received a $1,000 donation with a request that the funds be used to expand the availability of large print books in the community. And so administration would like to recommend that council approve the out-of-budget expenditure purchasing large print books. The Claris Home Library, the public library is definitely best able to know what items to purchase. So administration will request the library to purchase the books on the town's behalf, and then the town can reimburse them to the purchase to the maximum of $1,000.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to approve the out-of-budget expenditure of the large print books for the public's use to maximum of $1,000, and that these books be donated to the Claris Home Public Library.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Fire Department Remuneration Update. Abe?
Yeah, so this policy, the Fire Department remuneration policy, is a little dated and needs a refresh. There is one monetary ask that we're looking for in this policy change, which is a $4,700 per year on-call rate for the -- for the Fire Department officers. And that essentially is about $190 per two days, Friday and Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, for being on-call. 100 of that is covered by the town, and through an agreement with the MD, 95 of that would be covered by the MD. So this is a similar on-call structure that other municipalities in the region have, and we're actually bringing our -- in that sense, we're meeting the regional standard for on-call. What that does is it shows appreciation for the Fire Department staff, and it also gives relief for our fire chief, who is currently basically on-call all weekends, all the time. So there's a few schedules in here. There's a wage schedule for firefighters and the different classification of firefighter for work when they do in-town. And there's a schedule for when they do work in the MD of Willow Creek. And then there is Schedule C, which is the on-call portion, consisting of the town of Claris Homes portion and the MD of Willow Creek's portion.
Questions? Could I have a motion to recommend to approve this revision?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to approve the revision to policy number 3.3.20 with the addition of officer responsibility pay.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, request for decision. Oh, financial report, sorry. Statement of operations. Abe?
Yeah, this is the town's statement of operations, year-to-date, October 31st, 2023.
Questions? Concerns? Could I get a motion to approve the financial statement? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended October 31st, 2023 as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, open house notice. Abe?
So the town has been working on an area structure plan with a landowner in the north end, just west of the highway, north end of town. That is nearing completion, and we would like to have an open house for that. However, I believe the date has changed since we issued the agenda, through no fault of our own. But our company that is doing the area structure plan has let us know they wouldn't be able to make that January 8th deadline, which is what we proposed in the info brief. And they provided an alternative time of February 12th, which would be the first council meeting in February, again at 6:00 p.m. So we would -- additionally, because this is an open house, this really should have come to you as a request for decision, we'd like it to be part of the council's open house schedule for 2024. And that's something normally that council sets by motion. So we haven't discussed what that schedule, we haven't brought that schedule to you yet for 2024, but if we can get a motion just to set that, we'll include it in the conversation when we bring a yearly open house schedule to you.
Could I concern make that motion? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to set a town council open house for Monday, February 12th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. at the town office with discussions to focus on the North Point Area Structure Plan.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, emergency management exercise. Abe?
So we recently had a -- the town recently held an emergency management exercise. We got some correspondence from provincial officials, emergency officials, which is attached to this information brief, so we thought we would forward it on to council for information. But basically, municipalities are required to hold a tabletop exercise, an emergency management tabletop exercise every year, and a functional exercise, which is the one we held last year, that needs to be every four years. Last year, it also was a regional exercise. And a bit of information, just to recap, what was done during that regional functional exercise as we initiated our incident command posts. We declared state of local emergencies. We had council involved, some council members involved in that one as well, participating in mock media scrums, responding to a mock regional disaster. So Fort McLeod, MD of Willow Creek, Staveley, Nanton, and Claris Home were all involved in that one. So coming out of that exercise, we realized that there's a lot of paperwork, staff realized there's a lot of paperwork involved with running an incident command post and running through an emergency, a large-scale emergency. And so the focus, the real focus this year was to actually run through and do another mock exercise. It was a bit more than a tabletop exercise. It was a semi-functional exercise in that we ran through an emergency in town, and we completed a lot of forms that are -- that would be part, just to say, sharp, that would be part of an emergency exercise. And so that was really one of the main purposes of doing that. Another purpose would be to refamiliarize town staff with the municipal emergency plan. Sometimes you only touch it once a year, and you need to make sure you get the most out of your exercise, right? Because there's a lot going on in there, so. out of your, your exercise, right? Because there's a lot going on in there. So we did that. That was about two hours. And then we had a one hour called, called a washdown, where we got some feedback from the provincial officials that were, that were with us that day. So. A bit of information on some of the reports that we filled out, council, the different forms, the total cost of the incident accumulated just over $33,000. Of course, this was a mock incident. We didn't spend that much money. But this, just an information item for you, council, to let you know that we're meeting that legislative requirement, that it happened, and let you know if you have any questions or comments.
Questions? Okay. CAO report, Abe?
Yeah, we've had our staff departments compile reports over the last month of some of the highlights. Do you have any questions on anything?
Questions? Okay. Council committee report. Questions, concerns, comments, additions?
In my bold italics, it says, please stop breeding, spay, and neuter your pets. This is seriously getting out of control at the shelters. Out of 31 dogs that we had to reject last month, probably 20 of them were puppies. So it's getting to be serious, and people need to help a little bit, or volunteer at the shelter. I'm not sure what to say, but...
I did have a request for council to tour cares.
Yes.
Is everybody up for that?
Absolutely.
Could we set that up, Abe?
Yes.
Council resolution status, any questions, concerns? Could I have a motion to adopt the information items?
Make motion to adopt the information items as presented.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Motion approved. Could I have a motion to go in camera, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to go in camera at 7:53 PM for the following items, A personnel, B land, C land, and D business interests of a third party.
All in favor? We are in camera. Camera?
Like motion for in camera?
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to come out of in camera at 8:48 PM.
All in favor? Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross at this meeting adjourned at 8:49 PM.
All in favor?